It is seven o'clock. I will call the common council meeting to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Enter.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Kotsky.
Here.
Iverson.
Here.
Leimer.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Swanson.
Here.
Lit. Here.
We have a call.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'm making motion to approve tonight's agenda, Mayor.
I'll second.
Motion by Doug, second by Mark. I just want to remind everyone this is a very heavy agenda, so please stay on topic. Any other discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. We don't have anyone signed up for public comment this evening. So move right into our annual report from Envision Greater Fond du Lac. That forward.
Do you want me to speak into that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for having me here tonight. I very much appreciate your time. I am Sadie Howell, the president and CEO of Envision Greater Fond du Lac. So this is my, I believe, second time officially presenting to you and updating you on our MOU. That we signed a second one. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. The last time that I was here, I talked about our three-year strategic plan, which we are closing out right now and will be beginning our five-year strategic plan. Centered again around uniting public and private partners to support countywide growth, serving as a unifying voice, cultivating the entrepreneurial ecosystem, and attracting and retaining a diverse, highly skilled workforce. Next slide. Here are just some of the team, our operational and our marketing team, who handle a lot of behind-the-scenes work. Next slide. I'm going to be focusing a lot on economic development because that is really what our MOU with the city is heavily focused on. So first is on retention. And I do have two of the team members here tonight. Reyna Lyman, our senior director of economic development, and Lisa MacArthur, our vice president of economic development. Reyna hopefully is a very familiar face along with Lisa to a lot of you in Ripon. Reyna recently transitioned and was, received a promotion into the senior director and focusing a lot on retention and expansion of existing businesses. So she handles our BRE program. That's the Business Retention and Expansion Program. She has met with three businesses in Ripon so far and has several more scheduled for this year. This is just an example of one of the data points that we can run for municipalities along with if a business is interested in moving into Ripon that we can give them certain data points. You're looking at a lot on here. One, there's two points that I thought I would point out. One, which would be no surprise to any of you, is housing affordability and pressure. Households are spending an average of 24% of their income on mortgage and basic costs with a median home value of just over $236,000. However, housing still does remain quite affordable in Ripon according to the Housing Affordability Index. And as, again, you already know, that the rising home values could produce a challenge for first-time home buyers and young families. Another interesting trend that is unique to Ripon and Fond du Lac County is that Generation Z, which is born between 1999 and 2016, not me, now represents the largest generation group in Ripon at almost 30%, followed by baby boomers, and then followed by millennials. So again, this underscores the importance of the amenities, jobs, and community planning that attract and retain younger residents. Next slide. Entrepreneurship. With Reyna's promotion and focus on retention, we did hire another individual, Zach Besom, as our economic development coordinator. Zach is fully taking on the Ignite Network, which focuses heavily on entrepreneurship. Here are just some of the events that we've held in Ripon so far. And year-to-date, we have provided technical assistance to 12 individuals and continue to host office hours at City Hall. Thank you, Mayor Grant, again, for the use of your office. 16 hours so far year-to-date. You'll see at the bottom, there is a little bit of a blurry, apologize for that, graphic called Ignite Rural. This is a new program that is going to be launched, maybe tomorrow morning, we might be able to send out another update on our press release. Ignite Rural is a business accelerator program that is going to take 10 solopreneurs on a in-person course that they will get an in-depth look at business planning. And at the end of this accelerator program, they'll have an opportunity to pitch for some pretty significant grant dollars. And that's what we're going to be very excited to announce soon is what that grant dollar is going to be. This is another really, really exciting opportunity that we were able to be part of, the WRNC Business Opportunity Fund. This was spearheaded by Wapan, Ripon, North Fond du Lac, and Campbell Sport, in which we jointly applied for funds through the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation and received $240,000. That also had some match dollars with each of these municipalities. The fund can be used for startups, up to $10,000, expansion up to $25,000. What makes it unique is 80% of the fund, it goes back into a revolving loan fund. And then the last 20% can be a forgivable grant if they meet certain metrics. Again, you have to be a business located within one of these four communities. You do have to go through Envision and receive technical assistance from us. And another really great point of this is because the capital is kept local, we'll be able to reinvest it into these communities as well as being able to be nimble and flexible so that when an applicant comes, a decision can be made pretty darn quickly. They're not waiting months for a decision. We expect already that three businesses are going to be applying for the fund in Ripon over the next few weeks. And, excuse me. I do have to also thank, again, City Administrator Sontag, who, without him, this grant would not have made it across the finish line. Adam put an incredible amount of time into this grant application. If you've ever seen a WEDC grant, they are incredibly cumbersome and require a lot of technical detail. And Adam spent a lot of time with Reyna working on this. Also, as the fiscal agent and stepping up to do that, he right away volunteered Ripon to be the fiscal agent in order to get it across the finish line. And again, I talked about this at our annual meeting. I've talked about this on a lot of the news that I was able to be on with this. This is really unique, that four different communities came together. And that's all due to the councils as well. The councils all voted to approve this application and to be part of it. And that's really exciting for Fond du Lac County to have collaboration like this across municipalities that view each other as supporting one another and not as competition in a silo. Lisa, who is here in the audience as well today, Lisa handles a lot of the attraction. And she is a great matchmaker, in which some of the examples in the past that I've talked about here are the flash trucking deal, who was in the industrial park. So Lisa works a lot on marketing the industrial park, working with site selectors and developers. Just recently, Lisa made two key introductions to City Administrator Sontag. One for an investor looking at an opportunity, he is interested in building apartments and/or potentially a hotel of some kind. And a second was to another housing developer who attended our housing forum in January. And they are interested actually in a couple sites in the city of Ripon. That housing forum, actually, I'm going to talk about that later. Next slide. Lastly, another important piece of our economic development is workforce programming, which we define as working with the K-12 school districts. These are just some of the events and programs that we run. And we're very much looking forward to a renewed partnership with the new Ripon superintendent. Here are some more of our team members. The Joe, Mike, and Amy work on more of what we call the chamber side of the operations. And then lastly, I wanted to touch on advocacy, which is also part of our MOU, is partnering together on joint advocacy. Some of, last year and this year's lobbying highlights are listed on the slide. I do want to give another plug for POP 101. This was a program we created two years ago in order to better engage people who might be interested in running for office or serving civically, either as a volunteer on a committee, running for council, running for county board. So it is a two-evening program where folks can come through and learn how to create a platform, how to file the paperwork, how do you do a radio interview. Bob Nelson is usually pretty good about talking new people through what an interview might be like. But that can be pretty daunting for our people. So we are going to be opening the registration soon. If you know anybody who might be interested in being part of the program, make sure to send them our way. And then I did want to touch on that housing forum. In January, we brought together the Fond du Lac County Housing Forum. And as a chamber and an economic development organization, we determined that our role in the housing crisis in this county was best served as a convener. And we brought together housing developers from around the state along with the municipalities who had identified themselves as open to development in housing and realtors. The developers, we brought about 20 developers to this housing forum, all of who were new to doing a development in Fond du Lac County. So this was their introduction of what it could be like to start a project here. And then after, we had some presentations from WIDA, with the H, to learn about the housing tax credits. There was an opportunity for networking with these municipalities. So Adam was one of them in the back of the room and left with some business cards for new opportunities in developments. And like I had said, the one gentleman who did follow up and is interested in two different sites in Ripon came directly from that housing forum. And then two other specific advocacy pieces with Ripon. We did put together an introductory meeting for Tysons when they were coming to the community and we brought together public and private community stakeholders. And we are working very, very closely with a current Ripon business on a retention and possibly an expansion. And now I'm happy to answer any questions or hear any feedback.
I actually have something. I'm glad to see that you have a program to help people run for office. The League of Women Voters in Ripon does that. We're planning to do it again this year, so if it's okay, it might pick your brain because and we're thinking about doing it in this room so it could be televised so that other people can see it too.
Sure.
It would be good to you coordinate a little bit.
Absolutely. Happy to. Thank you.
I can email you.
That would be great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Sadie, for presenting this and coming to Ripon tonight in the storm. And obviously, I assume that, I mean, all this good work, that the relationship, it sounds like it's going really strong. And Adam, are you, I don't know, are you able to comment on your perspective on sort of relationship, how perhaps that has evolved or changed?
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly, a couple of years ago, we've had conversations and, you know, the city, you know, through the MOU and funding mechanisms, kind of, you know, rocked the vote a little bit. And ultimately, the goal in some of that was to have a better relationship and work on some of these things and come together. And over the past two years, I will just say that the effort of Envision in Ripon has been significant. I mean, it's a two-way street, right? We, as a community, have to work with them as well as, you know, it's not always just them. I think there was some of that going on as well. But certainly, the idea that we have one of their staff members here twice a month in our building, meeting with entrepreneurs, working with local business owners, as well as kind of working with Craig and the Main Street Group and our local chamber and kind of strengthening that relationship. We've come a very long way in a short period of time. And then, obviously, just the idea of doing the housing forum and some of the issues that Envision has been tackling has led to more collaboration among the communities. And they've really been the conduit to help that, although we generally get along as communities, right? And I talk regularly with a number of my colleagues in the county. Certainly, some of the driving force beyond just conversation is Envision and their team. So it's come a long way. And I think the MOU was very wise and has helped. And communication like this has been helpful as well.
Thanks. And I will just add, I recently had, very recently, a business locally reach out to me that they wanted some help and guidance. They didn't know where to go to. So I referred them to your Envision, and your staff followed up very quickly.
Thank you.
So grateful for that, Sadie.
Thank you. And if I could just also add, you made a good point. I was remiss in not mentioning Craig Tivon and Ripon Main Street and the Ripon Chamber. And I'd say that relationship has come a long ways as well and has been really, really helpful. And it was very cool to welcome the WEDC secretary and deputy secretary, Missy Hughes and Sam Rikers, to Ripon a month and a half ago-ish. So to hear and present officially the WRNC grant opportunity. And then they also took time to tour Ernesti and Canute and walk around and learn a lot more about Ripon. And at that meeting, and Craig Tivon helped put that together, Missy Hughes, the secretary, said that it was this application and some interactions that WEDC had with Fond du Lac County municipalities and Envision that we're collaborating a lot and working towards a better entrepreneurial ecosystem that we were the recipient of this grant. So that was pretty, pretty cool to hear. In the state of Wisconsin, she took notice of Fond du Lac County.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving into our agenda items then. First, we have alcohol, or annual alcohol beverage license requests for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. I believe we just have two applications in this.
I move we approve both applications for alcohol beverage licenses for China 1 effective July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026.
I'll second.
A motion by Ellen, second by John. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving these alcoholic beverage license, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. And next, we have sidewalk cafe and/or outdoor service beer garden licenses for the same period. Here, we just have the one for Canute.
I have a question regarding this. He did include a map, and I just want to confirm it's for the north side of the building and not the sidewalk in front. And I would like to make a motion to approve the sidewalk cafe slash outdoor service beer garden licenses for Canute Brewing or Canute Enterprises effective July 1, 2025 through July 30, 2026.
I'll second.
Motion by Ellen, second by Mark. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving this permit, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have a design contract amendment, or two amendments, number one and number two, for the library renovation project. You'll see in your packet that the first one is a rerate because the overall cost of the job went up substantially from the initial estimate. And the second one is for furniture design.
I have a question. Where is the revised, or the adjustment coming from for the increase in costs? Is that coming out of the library fund that they had developed for the renovation?
Yeah, so the original contract, I spelled it out here, and then the library board had an updated budget when it was bid, with the bid amount plus the adjustments in it for these allowances. So they did commit additional funding to cover this in total for the project.
And I move that we accept the design contract amendments, number one and number two, for the library renovation project.
I'll second you.
Motion by Ellen, second by Jolene. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving design contract amendments, number one and two, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. Thank you. All right. Next up is TSA application. Yeah, for safe water drinking. Adam, do you want to summarize this one?
Yeah, so as part of the Hamburg Henny project, we've been talking with MSA. We obviously are into the project. We received a $1 million CDBG grant for a part of the project, financing the other portion of the project. We have the opportunity to apply for Safe Drinking Water Loan Fund funds. That's a program coming through the DNR, the federal government, that offers a much lower interest rate in the longer term than we can get on the open market without bonding. So basically, you can kind of see the summary here. The first thing would be applying for the Safe Drinking Water Loan. That would be a $12,000 fee. That's the PSA. Essentially, on about a $2.1 million project with a $1 million grant, we would, we could receive up to about $250,000 of principal forgiveness and then a loan of about $700-some thousand. So it's advantageous for us to pursue this. Well, principal forgiveness is a hope. There's no guarantee. Principal forgiveness essentially is a grant. It's forgiven principal off of the amount that you are getting loaned out. They have expanded this program at a state level to put more funding into the fund, so the dollars should go further. Ultimately, even with just doing a loan, the interest rate at like 1.232% is far better than what we can do. So we would advise that we do pursue this.
I move that we accept the, that we go ahead and submit an application for SFY 2026 to, for Safe Drinking Water, for the Safe Drinking Water Program. I'm in the wrong place, aren't I?
No, you're in the right place.
Sure, yeah.
They just make it complicated.
It's the professional services agreement.
Yeah, well, what he said.
So the motion is to approve the professional services agreement for MSA to apply on our behalf.
I'll second with a note that the lump sum fee is $12,000, not $12.
I wish I did.
Period.
I think I corrected it somewhere.
Any discussion on that motion?
Question as far as we're spending $12,000 with guarantees of almost nothing, so...
It's not a guarantee of nothing. We will qualify for the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program.
Would we do that anyway without this?
Well, no. I mean, we would, generally speaking, the ability to apply to a program of that nature is outside of the capabilities of staff at this point. It is a long program with federal requirements and a lengthy submission requirement that we have due on June 30. So we have a short period of time to turn around. And we have done the math, right? We look at this every time and we say we, water tower project, right?
Yep.
The scope of that project, we could have gotten financing through the Safe Drinking or the Loan Fund, right? But the cost to apply and administer it ultimately is cost prohibitive based on the amount. So you have to get to about a half million dollars or so in financing to really make it worth our time by the time you factor in all the costs associated with it. The nice thing with this is we bundle. The nice thing with this is we bundle this with CDBG, and we have the same requirements for both programs. So we're really getting a better deal because we already are working within federal guidelines on this project. This is just another funding source that ultimately, you know, is a better interest rate. You know, generally, we'd be at four plus or minus percent, you know, probably plus, maybe even five, six percent. And we generally are left at 10-year terms, so without going to further bonding. So this is a nice program. We've used it in the past as well, on the Vermont Street Parkway Terrace Project, the same bundling, right? That we bundled CDBG and Safe Drinking Water. So just the kind of same idea. But generally, yeah, we do the math and we say, does it make sense? And in this case, yes, it does.
Okay, thanks.
John?
Would we get our answer before the project is done?
Yeah, yeah. So we, yeah, we do what's called intend to applies for like every project we ever want to do, and then we move them forward. So we're already on a list, and if this just moves us forward on the list, this is the next step to apply by June 30. We'll know within a couple months after application whether we get principal forgiveness or not, because what happens is, you know, some people apply, and if they don't get principal forgiveness, or they haven't done the project, or the project comes in too high, they drop off, right? So our intention is to take this across the entire finish line.
Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the PSA for MSA to do this application on our behalf, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. And following on the heels of that is a resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures for this program.
I move we accept the resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures.
Second.
Motion by Ellen, second by John. Any discussion on this one?
Good question. What's all in the project? Is that the project in quotes? It's just everything else that's incidental to it?
It's, yeah, so it's the Hamburg Henny project, and in here, the estimated cost is 2.5 million. That's a little heavy, so they put everything in it. At the end of the day, there are certain things that aren't reimbursable, so we put everything in it, and then whatever's not, we, you know, you push maybe some of that toward the CDBG grant, or you have that be our match. So we just, it's kind of all encompassing to be safe.
Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote for the resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures.
Denkert.
Yes.
Gallups.
Yes.
Gadske.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Reimer.
Yes.
Schatzinger.
Yes.
Sorenson.
Yes.
Split.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Moving on to resolution appointing a temporary municipal judge for Lakeside Municipal Court to fill a temporary term until an election is held on November 4, 2025.
I'll make a motion to appoint Troy Damstig as temporary municipal judge until November 4, 2025.
I'll second it.
Motion by Jonathan, second by Jolene. Any discussion on this one?
Just a question, maybe more technical than needed, but what happens if there is not a special election held by November 4? We get decertified and have to deal with a bunch of...
Yeah, so, yep, so basically, North Fond du Lac, Nick Leonard, the administrator there, has done a lot of the heavy lifting in terms of researching this all. We held our meeting. At that meeting, where it was unanimous to make this appointment, if it's not done, if there's not an election on November 4, 2025, they will, meaning the, I don't know, the court above the court, or the people that, yeah, whatever, they will decommission the court, which is not something we want to do, or we wouldn't advise, because then we'd go back to circuit court and Lud can tell you why that's no fun.
Any other discussion? So we'll have a roll call vote on the resolution appointing Troy Damstig to municipal judge for Lakeside Municipal Court.
Denkert.
Yes.
Gallups.
Yes.
Gadske.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Reimer.
Yes.
Schatzinger.
Yes.
Sorenson.
Yes.
Split.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And just as an informational, all the other communities have to approve the same appointment?
Correct.
Okay.
23 communities.
All 23. Good luck, Troy. All right, moving on to a resolution ordering a special election for municipal judge of the Lakeside Municipal Court to be held on November 4, 2025.
I move that we adopt a resolution ordering a special election for municipal judge of the Lakeside Municipal Court to be held on November 4, 2025.
Adam?
Denkert.
Yes.
Gallups.
Yes.
Gadske.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Reimer.
Yes.
Schatzinger.
Yes.
Sorenson.
Yes.
Split.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Next, I have a resolution recognizing and commending Captain Troy Damstig for his dedicated service to the city of Ripon and his career in law enforcement. Whereas Captain Troy Damstig has served in law enforcement for a total of 34 years, with the last 15 years dedicated to the city of Ripon Police Department, and whereas Captain Damstig has served with honor, integrity, and professionalism, playing a vital role in maintaining public safety and upholding the law, or the law in Ripon community, and whereas since 2017, he has served as captain of police, providing leadership, mentorship, and support to officers and staff, and helping to guide the department in fulfilling its mission to serve and protect. And whereas Captain Damstig's contributions to the department and the city of Ripon are a testament to his commitment to excellence in law enforcement. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city, that the Ripon City Council hereby recognizes and commends Captain Troy Damstig for his years of dedicated service to the city of Ripon and his exemplary career in law enforcement, and extends its sincere gratitude for his service to the community. Chief, would you like to say a few words?
Geez, two consecutive meetings, but I hope this isn't a trend.
And like the last meeting, we should probably get a motion for the resolution before you start. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that.
I'll second.
Got a motion made by David, second by Steve. Chief?
Sure, thank you very much, Mary. I appreciate the words that you said for Captain Damstig, and I couldn't agree more. When I became chief in 2017 was the same day that Troy was promoted to captain, so he's kind of been my right-hand man all the time that I've been chief, and certainly appreciate everything that he's done for me personally, with administration in the department. He is heavily relied upon by the officers for everything, from computer stuff to basic questions to coming in on an off day, and he was just in on Saturday for three hours on his off time working here, because we had a problem with a computer issue. So definitely going to miss Troy. He is gonna, we are going to have some huge shoes to fill because of his work ethic and what he's done for the department and the community, and we certainly wish him all the best as he moves forward into his new role that you've all just discussed. So it's an exciting time for him, exciting time for us in the police department, and we wish him all the best. Correct. Got a plaque for you, remembering your years of service along with the retirement of your badge. Congratulations. It has been an honor to serve the citizens and the community. I thank you very much for the support from the chief. I'd have done it without his leadership and mentorship, and I thank all of you and previous councils as well for their support as well. So it's been an honor, and now I'm looking forward to continuing to serve the community but in a new role. So thank you very much for your support. You.
Do we have any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote on the resolution recognizing and commending Captain Troy Damstig.
Denkert.
Yes.
Gallups.
Yes.
Gadske.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Reimer.
Yes.
Schatzinger.
Yes.
Sorenson.
Yes.
Split.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is a resolution to appoint an assistant city attorney. Adam, do you want to give a summary?
Yes. So in your packet, there's a resolution to appoint, sorry, city attorney Ludwig Wertz. He has the statutory authority to appoint assistant, an assistant city attorney. He has requested that this come in front of you to appoint Attorney President C. Wertz to serve as assistant city attorney, statutorily as well. This comes at, there'll be no compensation, so it is essentially a free service, so it is here for your consideration.
I have a quick question.
No, go ahead.
Are we adding this then to our, oh gosh, the words escaping me, is this an added position to the city going forward, or is this just a special?
No, it certainly, once he's in that position, he probably gets named as part of the record of city employees based upon that.
I didn't know if it was going to change our status for the number of employees or anything, if he...
Without compensation, so I don't know that.
Okay. I'm just asking.
But he has status.
Yes.
Because of the statute, just for bringing everybody up to speed. In 1981, when I graduated from law school, Steve Sorenson, my then employer, I won't tell you what I was being paid at that time, but you can guess, was a lot less than $20,000 total to be an attorney in the city of Ripon, came to me and said, you know what, I can name you assistant city attorney, but there's no compensation for the position. And that didn't really help my circumstances, but I was appointed in 1981 as assistant city attorney. So it's in the statute. In this situation, my son has graduated from the University of Wisconsin also, and during that period of time, he worked for the city of Madison, city attorney's office. So he's very familiar with the work that I do, and most specifically, in the area of prosecution. And that was the work that he did, so it was just a natural to have him available. We do pre-trials down here, we do pre-trials at the office, and it was really in that context that I wanted to protect the city and myself to make sure that he had the authority. So that's as much as anything. I'm hoping he will grow into the position, but all that's yet to be seen, and he's prepared. So any questions, please ask. I don't want to feel like I'm appointing a family member. I'm very tired of nepotism. This is not that. This is strictly an opportunity to support.
Well, and the reason I asked was, I know we're not budgeted for it, but we have changed our table of organization to include like a real assistant city administrator. So I was wondering if down the road, we would have an assistant city attorney, because then you have continuity of service if one or the other is...
Exactly. If something happened, he would be able to fill in and take care of those responsibilities. That's another issue. So thank you for that clarification.
I was just curious what the duties will be. Will it be more like in the court system, or meetings like you're doing, or?
Primarily the court system. I think he would tell you himself, he's waiting to get into all of this that we're doing this evening. But, you know, there may come a time, from time to time, if I'm unavailable and I want to recover or I'm not available by Zoom, that he would be available to the county council. He has the authority, once you appoint him, act in my stead, so he would have that, but that's not the intention of the appointment, to take advantage of the skills that he developed in law.
Doug, do you have a comment?
No, I'm just going to make a motion to appoint an assistant city attorney to, in need to put the name in, Mayor.
Yes.
Sure. I'll make a motion to appoint an assistant city attorney, Attorney Preston C. Wertz, to serve as assistant city attorney.
I'll second.
Motion by Doug, second by David. Any discussion?
I will take note that it's honorable that he's here tonight with us, and I have known Preston for many years, when he was a student at Ripon College, and he's always conducted himself respectfully, and I'm just very excited that he is right now back in the community and wants to serve in this way.
You. Anyone else?
Nobody's going to put him on the spot.
Yeah, can we?
I figured so. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. For those that I don't know, it's nice to meet you. For those that I do know, it's nice to see you again. Just to reiterate a lot about, a lot of what my dad said, my experience has been prosecution through law school. I worked for the Madison City Attorney's Office for about two years, and took cases through from start to prosecution, a lot of speeding, parking, things that I've already seen here as well, trespass and OWIs as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Any questions? Well, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, yeah.
All right, if there's no more discussion, we'll have a roll call vote for the resolution to appoint assistant city attorney Preston C. Wertz.
Denkert.
Yes.
Gallups.
Yes.
Gadske.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Reimer.
Yes.
Schatzinger.
Yes.
Sorenson.
Yes.
Split.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Next up is 2024 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report Resolution. Katie?
Good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight to present the 2024 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report and to request a resolution. The CMAR is a self-evaluation tool. Its purpose is to promote the owner's awareness and responsibility for wastewater collection and treatment needs, maximize the useful life of the wastewater systems through improved operation and maintenance, and initiate formal planning, design, and construction for system upgrades. To sum up the report, we got a great point average of 3.92, which is the highest in quite a few years. And the only issue we had was we had permit limit exceedance for phosphorus in May of 0.943 milligrams per liter, which our limit is 0.9 milligrams per liter for monthly average. Operational adjustments were implemented to improve biological phosphorus removal, and these adjustments not only improved effluent quality, but also decreased the need for chemical dosing to remove the phosphorus. Otherwise, we had a preference. So if you have any questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to publicly recognize you and your offices and your workers. I know you guys work really hard over there, and I saw some of the future planning and budgeting for upgrades and maintenance that we know that we need. So it's good to know that you guys are not only looking day-to-day, but also looking at the future needs of the system as well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'd just like to add to that and commend you and your staff for the amount of work put in overcoming some difficulties in the last few...
We're still.
Three years. But you've come a long way.
Thank you.
I'll move to adopt the resolution accepting the 2024... I'll move to adopt the resolution, accepting the 2024 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mark, second by Doug. Any discussion or questions? Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, we'll have another roll call vote for the motion accepting the compliance report.
Denkert.
Yes.
Gallups.
Yes.
Katsky.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Bremer.
Yes.
Schatzinger.
Yes.
Sorensen. Yes.
Split.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Right. Next up is an ordinance to amend the public nuisance, or public nuisances code subsection 11.24.030, 11.24.040, 11.24.050B, and 11.24.050D of the municipal code. Adam?
You have a staff report in your packet. So after last month's conversation, Alderman Split mentioned, are there any ordinances or anything that we could do to expedite some code enforcement issues? Chief Walner brought forward this as one of the sort of low hanging fruit or one of the issues that they are running into quite frequently regarding junk vehicles and unlicensed vehicles on private property. Essentially, we decided to shrink the timeline to have a junk vehicle or an unlicensed vehicle be considered that after a 14-day period on private property instead of a 30-day period, as well as then a 14-day period notice of impoundment versus a 30-day period notice of impoundment. So basically, the way, and Chief Walner certainly can come describe the process, but generally speaking, if we receive a complaint, it can take up to 60 days to actually get toward impoundment or further action. There are citations and there are certain flexibilities built within the ordinance for the police department to enforce this. However, I think the giant, or the main complaint that the police department gets is, well, it's been there for a while. It's, you know, why isn't it moved after 30 days? Or why, you know, it's taken this long, right? So this shortens that window and, and provides, I think, a little bit more expedited process to have people remove junk vehicles and unlicensed vehicles. So Bill can talk about anything in addition to that. Preston can talk about it. He, he did draft it. So, but anyway, Bill, if you have anything to add?
I think City Administrator Sante summarized that pretty well. One of the complaints that we often get is, we'll have somebody complain about this circumstance, a vehicle, and then because of the extended timeframes here of 30 days and then another 30 days for impoundment, they'll call back within a couple of weeks and say, hey, I complained about that two weeks ago and you guys haven't done anything. And it's like, well, yeah, it takes 30 days and then, so it just seems like it just takes forever for the complainant for us to get any resolutions. So that's why Alderman Split mentioned that at the last meeting, this was one that struck me right away as something we could make some improvements out of. But otherwise, I think City Administrator summed it up pretty well.
How, how frequently do we, do we have this issue?
Oh, a lot.
Oh, okay. Well, I was just wondering.
Yeah, yeah, we, we deal with this quite, quite frequently. Most, I would say, as far as our code enforcement, 90% of the people voluntarily comply once we provide them notice. You know, across the board on all of our codes. So it's very rare that we get to the enforcement part anyway, because most of it is, but the time, the time constraints, you know, it does take time for us officers to go out and we got to go out and recheck, and we got to go out and recheck, is, you know, all that sort of thing. So the code enforcement does take up a lot of time, but this is one of them that I thought we could have grasped based on what Alderman Split had suggested last meeting.
So I understand that a car can be out for a long time and then people are just now frustrated and maybe wait it to call. But, and so then it seems like it's taking a long time. But theoretically, are we saying, okay, so help me, the 14 days, so someone could get a warning for the first time and then they have 14 days to re, to, so it's 28 days for remedial action and 14, what do they have to do in 14 days?
So they either have to repair, make roadworthy, or register the vehicle within that 14 days. If they, if they don't do that within that 14 days, then we generally, we can either go out, we can issue a citation at the 14-day mark and say, we've given you 14 days. We can then issue a notice to impound, which will give them another 14 days and say, you know, you can, we can still impound. Or we can place that notice of impound right away on the first day and give them 14 days to take care of it. What we're looking for them, generally when we run into these vehicles, they're vehicles that are in total disrepair, have pieces missing, flat tires, or aren't registered. If they get them, and you know, the difficulty we have is determining if a vehicle is junk.
Are they cannibalizing these vehicles?
It can, it can be, or it can just be a vehicle that maybe broke down and it's sitting in the driveway or side yard and has just been there. And maybe now the license has expired, so it's not currently registered. Under the ordinance, if they tend to take care of that registration, then it, then it really dismisses that junked part because now the vehicle is registered, they've taken the time to do that, they've paid the fees to register. So generally, once they register it, then we're okay. But if the vehicle remains unregistered, junk, not roadworthy, that's when we, you know, and we give plenty of notices. It's not like we're standing there on 14 days and one minute, then we're issuing a ticket. A lot of times, we're issuing a second notice, you know, and then, so we're giving them time to comply because sometimes it does, you know, there's, every, every single one has special circumstances. You know, they're, they're working on getting it done. It's just like a lot of our other code stuff. So we work with the property owner, we try to get resolution. Like I said, 90% of them comply on their own. That's what we want. We don't want their money. We don't want to have to issue tickets. This just gives us that authority to do that if we get to that point.
And then just a quick follow-up. 14 days, does that mean weekends as well? Should we say 14 business days?
No, I think 14 days is adequate. I mean, you could go down the pick and, or.
Ivy.
Ivy. You know, they have a kiosk there to do registration and you could do it that day. So I think 14 days is adequate. And if they just show proof or we can check it through the computer system to make sure that it's been done. I think 14 days is adequate.
John?
I would just like to thank Chief Walner for starting with this one. And hopefully, it is just the start of many that we can clean things up in the city.
Well, I think the next type, topic is going to help with that as well, so that you're going to discuss. And I will compliment Attorney Wertz for his work on this as well. So he did help us out with this one.
Well, can I, I'm assuming that, I mean, is it something that maybe Madison also has something similar or, or other, is this follow of a municipality?
I believe so, yeah. I'd like to make the motion to amend Public Nuisance Code subsections 11.24.030, 11.24.040, 11.24.050, and 11.24.050D of the municipal code.
I will second.
And motion by John, second by David. Chief?
I just wanted to also mention real quick before you vote. So this applies to a vehicle on private property. We still have an ordinance that requires a vehicle to be removed off from city street within 24 hours. So there's a difference there. City street, not repaired, dismantled, 24 hours. This, this applies to private property, so those vehicles that are sitting on somebody's private property. Just wanted to make sure we understood that.
Thank you.
I didn't want you to feel like I was voting yes for everything all night. So I disagree, and I understand the intent of it. But I think for me, as someone, let me say, in two reasons. When I was 15, I bought a car for 40 bucks. I mean, that car was unregistered and the only way that I was able to get that car up and running was to have like another car. And it was like piecemealing my other car together, right? And so I would be out of compliance with this. I didn't even know that it was 30 days. I was out of compliance back in 2000 when I bought this car. So hopefully, there's a statute of limitations on that. So I, I just feel it's like an undue burden that we're putting onto the lower income bracket that lack the funds, the time, the ability, and the storage for maintaining a vehicle that they otherwise could. And so a lot of times, those people might have a car that is unregistered or unlicensed and they need a broken down one to make it work. And I understand the intent then is so there's not coolant, there's not oil and stuff draining out, but that should be covered by other ordinances. So the way I read this is just an ordinance covering a community well-being and aesthetics, which is great. I don't want my neighbor to have a junkyard, but that would come to the other portion of it. And again, like I always say the same thing, like, in my opinion, like, that's their prerogative of what they do over in their, in their area. And so we're saying in one way, somebody can't have an unlicensed vehicle and it can't move because it's aesthetically unpleasing. There's like an RV down the street from me that hasn't moved in 75 years, I think, right? It's just been parked there. There's other people that have boats all over their yards that are usable, right? So what we're saying in aesthetics, I just feel is, is subjective and it's putting an undue burden onto people in lower income.
Just so it's clear, the ordinance, it states, or in the alternative, place a vehicle in a garage or enclosed structure, place a vehicle within duly authorized licensed sale to repair or sell within lawfully operated, properly exonerated area, in compliance with all state, local laws, rules and regulations, licenses and contracts.
I get your point. Agreed. Agreed. I just, I mean, for me personally, when I was like 15, I mean, I was like pushing it into the road and working on it and then pushing it into my parents' front yard and working on it, back and forth for like eight months, so.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote for the ordinance to amend Public Nuisance Code sections mentioned previously.
Denkert.
Yes.
Gallups.
Yes.
Katsky.
No.
Iverson.
Yes.
Bremer.
Yes.
Schatzinger.
Yes.
Sorensen.
Yes.
Split.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Next item is ordinance to amend Minimum Housing Code Sections 21.06.010 of the municipal code. Adam?
In your packet, there's another, just quick, brief staff report on this. And talking to Chief Walner and looking through our, kind of our code enforcement processes, we also identified that in the minimum housing code, it was pretty restrictive in terms of who may enforce the minimum housing code. So that's, you know, minimum housing standards for, you know, things like roof and, and building improvements. There is another code, a more public nuisance code, that does not allow for dilapidated buildings, does not allow for, you know, unsanitary conditions of buildings. This is kind of the more intense version of that where you are citing specific deficiencies within a property that are listed within the ordinance that then can lead to, you know, razor repair orders, right? So all this does is essentially change one, one sentence to begin where the building inspector or their designated official or officer, they can enforce the minimum housing code. The idea being that when we have code enforcement officials or say zoning administrator out in the field assessing properties for other compliance issues, because generally speaking, it's not always just one issue at a property. There's grass, vehicles, and/or, you know, there's usually a combination of things. And instead of using just the kind of broad public nuisance or dilapidated building ordinance, there are specific housing, minimum housing standards that can be identified. Ultimately, that then puts it in a better position to issue a repair order from the building inspector. So the building inspector would be the only one that could issue that more, you know, that heftier action in a razor repair. But this sort of helps, again, kick the ball quicker, get the ball rolling quicker when we see larger issues at a property. And Bill certainly can address this as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the housing code subsection 21.06.010 of the municipal code as written.
I'll second.
And motion by David, second by John. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call. Oh, go ahead.
Who decides the definition of in the open? Like if there is a sort of a privacy screen that's put up or, so it would be code enforcement officer, I mean, it would be.
Bill can talk about what rights they have in terms of entering and all that, you know, viewing a property.
Normally, you would have a side of road or sidewalk. If you stand there at the property line and look and you're just standing there and you can see something, that'd be considered visible, but I'm sure Chief.
Yeah, think of it like this. Where can a Girl Scout go to sell cookies? Okay? The Girl Scouts not walking in your backyard, not walking around your private property. They're generally walking up to the front door, right? Knock on the door. That's kind of a layman's term to really think about that. So we're not entering properties. A lot of times, these complaints are generated from neighbors that are talking to us. The purpose here is that, as we looked at some of this, some of the code things that we're looking at that City Administrator Sante was addressing, we're seeing things that we could probably, you know, as police officers, we're not building inspectors. So we're not going in checking electrical or plumbing or those things. But the average layperson per se can walk up to a house and if there's big holes in the roof or the siding's falling off or there's windows missing, right now, the ordinance pretty much reads that the building inspector must take that or that should come from the building inspector. What this is designed to do is to allow us to then take some action on his behalf, to supply those notices, to get that ball rolling and, and start that process going forward. If we get to a point where there's a razor repair order that needs to be issued, there's state statutes that regulate that, that only a building inspector can do that. So we wouldn't be involving that. What this is, is to help us get that ball rolling on getting some of these properties addressed that we're having issues with. Like Adam said, a lot of times, we go to properties on junk vehicles and we get there and we noticed, hey, there's a hole in the roof or there's, you know, pieces missing, you know, there's all kinds of other issues that we tend to address. But this specific section, we did not have the authority based on how the ordinance was written to address any of those things. So we would just have to send emails to the building inspector and hope that that was done, you know? So that, this has kind of been a, an issue that's been years, kind of, and we're just kind of, as we were viewing things, this is one of them that we couldn't make some improvements out of.
And I guess something that also I should have asked for the last one. It's a notice, you know, you have 14 days from being noticed. If someone happens to be in the hospital or on vacation or maybe a rental property, what, I'm assuming something is put on the door, but can, doesn't notice mean that you've, physically, you're talking with somebody?
No, it can mean a variety of things. So we have the ability to do door hangers. We have the ability to do written notices. On rental properties, generally, we do a door hanger and we notify the landlord of the property. So if you remember, and a lot of times you'll see in my monthly reports, I give you like a printout on some of the code things that we're doing. That's coming from a program that we're using called ComKate that helps us track code violations. That all automatically goes in there. So it's up to the officer and generally, myself and Officer Henning are doing a lot of these. So we're picking what we're doing. And kind of, it's, it's individual based on the property a lot. So if we go to a rental, so for instance, I did one today, I will send notice to the landlord, the owner of the property. landlord, the owner of the property, as well as probably put a door hanger on the door. So that the tenant gets noticed, and then the landlord gets noticed. For other properties, written notice, you know, we'll send written notices a lot, and we'll do door hangers, or this kind of areas. A lot of them, to be honest with your repeat customers, so we've kind of had contact and know how to do that in the past, so, so there's a variety of things that happen there.
Could someone, I, probably with any of our ordinances, if they had an extenuating circumstance, I would think they'd probably talk to you first, but could they come to write a letter to come? I think of, you know, definitely...
Yeah, and they often do that. We, like I said, we don't want a property owner's money. We don't want to find them. So we're always willing to work with the property owner to come to solutions. You know, I'll give you an example. We're working with a property owner that we issued citations to, we got him in court, and based on the conversations in court, I was able to arrange, you know, members from Ripon College to go to their house and help them clean up their property. Prior to, you know, we held our citation open to make sure that they're still working on it, but we were able to facilitate that. We've done that several times in the community where we've organized and had officers show up to help them clean up property, you know, because of some extenuating circumstances. So, you know, we're not out there trying to, you know, drive the hammer here, but on the same context, we have some things to address in this community when it comes to code enforcement. I think you can see that as you drive around, and you probably get concerns about that from your constituents, I'm sure. So this allows us the ability to take that action if we need to get to there, but we're always willing to work with property owners as long as they work with us and they show an intent that they're willing to work through the problem, and we can help them through that. The last thing we want to do is be issuing citations, but we need to have that enforcement arm when that situation comes to that.
Yeah, I think it's very important for council to know, and for the citizens to know, that our police chief has been very proactive in trying to make this thing work. This is a lingering problem in every community, and I just commend our chief for the steps he's taken to work with the city administrator and the building inspector to come forward to address these situations. Like the chief said, if you can just drive around and you can see the problems in the community, and they're difficult, and property rights are certainly to be honored and protected. We certainly recognize that on the enforcement end, that Bill and I have worked years with people to say, "Okay, we understand you're sick," or "Somebody's in the hospital," or, you know, "You just don't have the means to do it. Let's do it little at a time, let's get it done." So the citation process, the city attorney's office working with the police department has started to be affected, but we need further tools, and that's why it's here this evening for the officer and the code enforcement arm of the police department, which is really wonderful for a community our size to have. And, you know, he's doubling up resources to help do another area that is unchecked in many communities, and we're making progress slowly. John would acknowledge that, but we're making progress, and we're getting people's attention. And that was back to, you know, just so everybody understands the value of this court system as opposed to going back to circuit court. Obviously, I had worked in the circuit court system for years before Bill became chief. User-friendly. This is a user-friendly municipal court system to be able to get attention. Daily fines, which we're just starting to scratch the surface of, is going to give us the tool to get compliance in many situations which were left out there under circuit court systems. So we're going to, we're going to keep pushing, we're going to keep going, and I just wanted to put that in, that the chief is just that type of individual that gets it. He isn't going to be peeking at people's windows or going around the backyard to catch somebody. These are open and already a situation, and we need you to address them. Thank you.
I hope this doesn't put a burden on your officers too much doing this extra work, but I do see it as a cost savings to the city with our inspection service. That would be an added fee if they had to go out, correct?
Yeah, and I would just say, there's a few other things we're working on, right? You know, there's, we don't want to get the building inspector involved or have these come into play until there's a very serious situation, and frankly, most building inspectors don't want to be involved with code enforcement until it's at a situation where, you know, they're doing a razor repair. And ultimately, then, we have a ComKate system. We are working with ComKate to bring in a product that allows for online supplemental reporting for complaints. We'll also have kind of a code enforcement page developed that answers questions. So, you know, you can understand as a public what happens or how the process works. So get better education out there because the work that is happening, while it's sometimes is slow based on the ordinance, or slow because we're working with people, it is happening. So that system will roll out in the next couple of months and publicize it, then people can anonymously put in a complaint. They also can non-anonymously, but it's still anonymous, right? And we can follow up with that if we have questions, right? We can provide them updates of enforcement. So, you know, so it doesn't sit here and say, "Well, you know, I called and nobody's doing anything," right? So we're countering that with the technology and the processes we have because we are trying to take this more seriously and, in a lot of cases, play catch-up and work with people as well. So ultimately, we've taken some steps since the last meeting to, to just frankly, let's tackle this because it is at that level where it's taking a lot of time, and the only way to get ahead of it is to give it more resource right now and get ahead of it a little bit more and be proactive, so. Thank you.
Yeah, I will just compliment, one of my officers in particular, Officer Henning, has really done a lot of work on code enforcement, and he's doing a lot there, so...
Good, thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. We'll have another roll call vote for the ordinance to amend Minimum Housing Code subsection 21.06.010 of the municipal code.
Benkert?
Yes.
Gallups?
Yes.
Gadske?
No.
Iverson?
Yes.
Reamer?
Yes.
Schatzinger?
Yes.
Sorensen?
Yes.
Split?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Next is an ordinance to amend Section 20.43.070 of the municipal code. Hearing none. We'll have another roll call vote for the ordinance to amend Section 20.43.070 of the municipal code.
I second.
Motion by John, second by Helen. Any discussion on this one?
In the plan commission, I'll speak as a member of that, we kind of just discussed that moving to seven members allows us to less frequently or unable to have a tie in a vote. And then also allowing property owners that don't necessarily reside within the city gives, you know, the historic preservation does a lot of work and works with property owners, and to force some representation to only be from the city of Ripon was kind of an onerous requirement to be involved in that group.
Agreed. Any further discussions or questions? Hearing none. We'll have one more roll call vote for the ordinance to amend Section 20.43.070 of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Benkert?
Yes.
Gallups?
Yes.
Gadske?
Yes.
Iverson?
Yes.
Reamer?
Yes.
Schatzinger?
Yes.
Sorensen?
Yes.
Split?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to project updates and staff reports. PD?
I just want to quickly say thank you to Pastor Paul Effington. He's our police chaplain and his church members at Trinity Church. We had our bike rodeo yesterday. We waited until the hottest day of the year to have that. So, yeah, it was a little toasty, but he went, Pastor Paul has organized that event, and his members of his church always supplied great resources for help at the event, and this year was no different. It's a lot of extra work on his behalf in addition to his daily duties that he has as a pastor for the church and as our police liaison, so I just wanted to publicly acknowledge them for their help and support of that program.
Thank you.
How is that one-way going by the Boys and Girls Club? I saw the, it was officially changed.
It has changed, yep. We did have the, it was a learning process the first week or so, couple weeks, and then we made some modification on some signage, and it appears that everything's going well now.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Katie, anything for Water Public Works?
All good.
All right. Naomi?
I'm good.
Adam?
I'll just note that next week is July 3, and that's when our fireworks are going to go. So Murray Park at around 9:30, and there will be some activities ahead of time put on by the Parks and Rec Department, so, yeah, just July 3.
All right.
All righty, yeah. So, just that reminder. That's all I have.
All right. All right. Tonight, I have two appointments that I'd like to make. They're both reappointments. First one is for Parks and Recreation, Sandy Wizneski. This would be a reappointment for another three-year term. Would anyone like to make?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion by Jonathan, second by Jolene. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Sandy Wizneski for another three-year term to Parks and Rec, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved, thank you. And the other one is Vince King to another, a reappointment for a five-year term on the police commission.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by David, second by Steve. Any discussion there? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Vince King for another five-year term on the police commission, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved, thank you. And the other one is Vince King to another, a reappointment for a five-year term on the police commission.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by David, second by Steve. Any discussion there? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Vince King for another five-year term on the police commission, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved, thank you. And the other one is Vince King to another, a reappointment for a five-year term on the police commission.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by David, second by Steve. Any discussion there? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Vince King for another five-year term on the police commission, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved, thank you. Any future agenda items or comments from council?
I would just like to thank the police department as well as the fire district. They were out and about. Many of us drove past trees and power lines that were down, and they were very busy making sure everything was safe for us. So a formal thank you to those, those fine public servants.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I guess I should have asked this. Chief, when you were up here about being that Fourth of July is coming up, is there any announcements to make for what type of fireworks are legal in the city?
Just the city. Stars. Bill, go ahead. I, you didn't give them a public PSA here.
Here's the general rule. Goes off the ground or goes bang, probably not legal. Okay? Yeah, we don't, the city doesn't, there is some language in that often gets presented to us about, people will come in asking about a permit from the city to be able to shoot off fireworks and stuff. The only permit the city issues is to the vendor for the events at Ripon Fest and Fourth of July. So also a reminder, you have Ripon Fest this weekend, so you know, enjoy that community event as well, so...
Yeah, so possessing a piece of paper from the firecracker store does not give you any legal authority.
Correct.
To discharge a firework item, just so I'm, just so it's clear. Certainly out there in the community, the people think, "Well, I got a permit." Can't disturb.
Any other comments from council?
At this time, I will seek a motion to adjourn to closed session under Wisconsin State Statute 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. The topic of discussion will be public works facility pay application and engineering agreements, and also discussing the minutes from the closed session from May 27.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mark, second by Doug. All those in favor of adjourning to closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll adjourn to closed session.[1743.82]